Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 19th special meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Certainly. Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord is excused. Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin. Might be coming. Commissioner Gosin.
Here.
Commissioner Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner King is excused. Commissioner Stone.
Here.
Very good, thank you. We have a quorum. At this point, I would like to ask Commissioner Hauser to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you, sir. Before we begin, particularly for members of the public who are watching this on public television, this is a virtual meeting and we're all kind of used to this now. The meeting is, actually, nobody is at City Hall other than James, our technician. And it's important to note that any decisions made by the Planning Commission, even in this virtual format, count. They're the real deal, they're a real vote, so just keep that in mind. In better times, that is not the case. Public meetings have to be held in person and be open to the public. The other thing I note, for those on television, you'll see a phone number displayed and that that's there for you. If you want to call in at any time during the meeting to make comments about any item on the agenda, you'll reach Sienna Hall and she will do the technical flip and put you on live. We won't see you visually, but we'll be able to hear you loud and clear. This system has worked really well for us over the last several months and several members of the public have called in with really important comments to me. With that, I'm going to go to the next item, number three, public comment. And I asked Sienna, our gatekeeper now, do you have any verbal or written communications or is anyone on hold waiting for us?
None of the above.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll revisit that again toward the end of the meeting. The next item is consideration and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2020. I asked the commissioners if you have had the opportunity to review the minutes and if you have any questions, concerns, changes, let us know. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
It's moved by Mr. Bavacqua.
Second.
And supported by Mr. Stone. Any further discussion? And the roll call, please.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
McGee?
The next item, number five. Consideration of a site plan to renovate the existing U.S. Scuba Center building for Chief Financial Credit Union, who had to drive up ATM and relocate the current branch activities in their administrative building located at 515 South Rochester Road. Before I turn this over to the planner, I just want to make sure the petition understands that this is the discussion item tonight. No action will be taken on the site plan. This is our first opportunity to review it and our purpose here is to give you feedback in terms of what we think about it and we'll decide later on whether we think it's ready enough, mature enough, to be scheduled for a public hearing in the near future. With that, I'll turn it over to Vidia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Amanda Fox on behalf of Chief Financial Credit Union to relocate their existing bank headquarters. I will share the site plan with you to relocate their bank headquarters from 200 Diversion Street, which is the building over here, to 505 South Rochester Street, which currently is the U.S. Scuba Building. The site has an area of approximately 1.24 acres and is on the east side of Rochester Road just before the bridge into downtown. This is a preliminary plan review and the goal of the preliminary plan review is to identify any deficiencies or possible corrections or changes that need to be made to the plan so that the applicant can address them before the public hearing. Banks with drive-in facilities are principal permitted uses in the district. Now, the site is located within two municipal jurisdictions. The north portion of the site, this is the dividing line, the north portion of the site, which is located within the city of Rochester, is zoned B1 general business. There is the southern half, which is located in the city of Rochester Hills, is zoned B2, which is called commercial, with an FP3, that is a flexible business overlay district. That is a designation for city of Rochester Hills. Since we are dealing with the city of Rochester portion, we will be looking at the site in its entirety, but we are looking at the use as a whole. Banks with drive-in facilities are principal permitted uses in the B1 district. The plan proposes addition of drive-through lanes on the east side of the building and the drive-through lanes will lead to a new proposed access drive and connect to the existing drive that connects onto South Street. So the proposed circulation is this new drive-through, which will come down this way, turn right onto South Street and then back up Diversion. So it is creating a loop in order to be able to exit from the new drive-through installation. The two properties will be provided with a shared access space because it went to be shared between other Diversion and this property. One of the concerns I had initially raised was the fact that the property has a significant grade drop from the south to the north. The approximate grade change from here to here is about 27 feet. And the applicant intends to engineer the slope for the access drive and include one-way signage to ensure that no vehicle tries to enter it on the wrong way and the slope designed over here is adequate enough to not cause any issues in winter or for vehicles trying to exit and turn onto Diversion. We had previously reviewed this plan. Our original preliminary review had two sheets worth of comments and the applicant has done a pretty good job of addressing almost all of them at this time. The couple of items that remain to be addressed is loading area. The plan shows the loading area as a 20 foot deep, 19.3 foot wide crosshatched area. This area has existing stairs projecting into it and it really doesn't look functional as designed. However, since this is an off-field, our ordinance requires the space to be 10 by 25. The better suggestion would be for the applicant to try and stripe it in this area so that it does not affect turn movements from this part and at the same time meets ordinance requirements for dimension sizing. The applicant has noted that the mechanical units will be placed on the rooftop of this building. I will scroll over to the elevation so you can see how the building is going to look with the proposed changes. Packet submitted by the applicant is thorough at this point of time. So this is the building elevation with the atrium addition on top over here, ceiling glass. The applicant had noted that mechanical units will be placed on the rooftop and will be provided with screening. That the number and size of the units, along with the location and screening, need to be provided at this time as part of site plan approval. It's not something that can be deferred to illegally. And finally, we had asked, since this is once again across jurisdictional property, the site located within two municipalities, we had asked applicant about the status of approvals from the city of Rochester Hills and the applicant had stated that the city of Rochester to coordinate with the city of Rochester Hills. It is typically the applicant's responsibility, coordinate with the city of Rochester Hills, determine what is the required timeline and procedure for the city of Rochester Hills and try to see how it fits in with our approval procedures so that both the processes go hand in hand in a concurrent manner. The city of Rochester will absolutely help along the process. However, it's not the city's responsibility to reach out to Rochester Hills to get the project through. The applicant needs to make sure that they are talking to both jurisdictions at the same time. At this point of time, the plan is in a sufficiently complete state except for these two clarifications to be made. So after the planning commission has asked us questions, if you feel comfortable, it would be my recommendation that you set this for a public hearing at your next available agenda audit. I would be happy to answer any questions if I may.
Vidia, I assume this will have to go through a complete, full public hearing at the city of Rochester Hills as well?
I believe so. I would defer to the applicant. I did not look up the city of Rochester Hills zoning ordinance to see if they require a public hearing for a principal permitted use. It's likely is a principal permitted use in Rochester Hills too. So the applicant can provide the clarification. The city of Rochester has a unique process where every project, principal permitted or special land use has to go through.
There a representative from chief that can answer that for? Maureen, you can help us there.
Yes, they're scheduled on the December 15th Planning Commission meeting for a public hearing at Rochester Hills.
Very good. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Other questions for Vidia?
Vidia, will the two parcels remain two parcels or is the intent to combine them to one?
I apologize, my dog is growling in the background. So if you hear any growling, it's my son just messing with her and she's probably going to bite him, but... With regard to two parcels, I believe it is going to continue remaining two parcels. Chief Financial is just doing a property line, boundary line adjustment between the two parcels and doing a lot line adjustment. It's going to continue to remain two distinct parcels, that is my understanding.
Then we treat the parking as an individual parcel based on the square footage of the building on this parcel?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Stone, I misunderstood. You were asking whether the parcel is going to remain separate in the city of Rochester and city of Rochester Hills. I believe they would be two... I don't know whether they would be integrated as one tax parcel ID. I'm guessing not because they are in two municipal jurisdictions. So even though it is, the project is located on two parcels, it would be considered in its entirety, both by the city of Rochester Hills and by the city of Rochester because it's one use. You cannot have the drive-through exit without going to the city of Rochester Hills and coming out onto the city of Rochester. So from a planning standpoint, we look at it as a single site.
Mr. Chairman, it's Nick, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Maureen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when I talked to Kristen at the Hills, it's also a special exception for them because of the drive-through. But they're doing the public hearing for both of those, I believe. And just one, just one correction. So when we get, Vidia, when you write your report the final time, really that driveway comes out on Diversion. Diversion is Diversion until the intersection and then South Street is to the east and then Diversion goes, you know, comes from first, that's Diversion, until it turns right. So this is the technicality, but I just noticed.
Okay.
So it changes name in that curve there, huh?
Correct. After the curve, right at the intersection going east at South Street.
Right. If you know, Vidia, could you put the site plan back up again? Looks like we have each parcel in both cities.
Correct, that's correct. So the deal that we had with Rochester Hills that we took to our city councils, we accepted, we had their local agreement that we have control over the site plan. We're going to review it, like Maureen said, and have a public hearing because they have to because it's a physical improvement in their city. But it's the parking, we're counting the parking in the Hills as if it's here. So to Commissioner Stone's point, we don't just have to say the top base are all that's with our part of the building. It's an overall site with an agreement between the two towns to have it as a unified site, even though there's a city boundary there. But you're right, they're going to keep our parcels. They have a different SKU number, a different Sidwell, so while they're all just theirs, we can't have one giant parcel because of the two cities.
Okay. But each parcel, like mad ass, each parcel has to stand out in terms of parking calculation?
It does not. So what we'll do is have an inner, though I have a mutual driveway and mutual parking agreement between both sides in the Hills and here so that it counts as one site and they get credit for the parking in the Hills on our site plan, so they do not stand alone.
Correct. The use is reviewed in its entirety. The parking does not have to be self-sufficient for each half of it because one half cannot function without the other. The whole thing is one entity.
Correct.
This is a question for chief, the chief representatives, but are these both owned by the parent company or are they owned by separate subsidiaries or how does that work?
Yes, so Chief Financial is just one entity.
And that owns, they own both parcels?
We own both parcels, right. The one that's existing now is our main office. So this will just be really the branch operation. It's more of a retail, that's why we think it's a great idea to have that out on Rochester Road. Kind of a operation there.
So commissioners, any other questions for Vidia at this point?
Is this a special project that has to come to council or not?
No, this is actually a principal permitted use in the B1 district. So it is a use that is permitted by right, it's not a special.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, could we have the appointed representatives from Chief Financial come on and the floor is yours. Please go ahead and explain your project to us.
My name's Rob Clark. I'm the architect for the project with CBI Design Professionals out of Blimfield Hills. You'll notice two of my staff members on your screens as well, which is Paul Merlo and Amanda Fox is project architect for this project. Vidia has done a pretty good job of summarizing what this project is. I'll do a couple of highlights, answer a couple of the questions that came up with Vidia's review as well. The overall, the overall project here is we're trying to accomplish taking the existing U.S. Scuba building, which is pretty well-known, I think, to all of us in the Rochester area. And I've been in the Rochester area for about 35 years. Everybody, everybody knows that building pretty well. And try to kind of honor the current shape and character of that building. The chief has some plans to utilize some of the signage and stuff as part of their interior decor and that's something that they're very community-minded that way. And so we're going to try to keep that going. The existing curb cut, we're intending to keep, keep that circulation coming in where it is right now. Pull out the parking lots and put them back pretty much where they are. We're reducing a little bit of the distance between Rochester, or excuse me, we're expanding a little bit of the distance between Rochester Road and the parking lot to give us a little bit more buffer space. And then the, the, the couple of critical things that we're adding is the drive-through because this is a branch office for them. So there's an ATM and a single teller line. The ATM actually is within the building, it's just in the side of the, inside of the building there. Thank you, Vidia. I assume that's you running it. The, the other thing that we're doing is we're adding a, the glass atrium, which we, which Vidia nicely noted for us. The intention there is to really create this as kind of a beacon for Chief right there to make a nice, very lit statement as to who they are and where they're at and have this be a very community kind of oriented building that is very inviting and it's easy to understand what's going on on the interior of that space when we do it. We're adding a few canopies to protect the glass from sunlight and, and protect the entrance points as well as a patio on the north side because it has this phenomenal view down into, into the downtown area of Rochester by itself. Kind of the forgotten end of the building that we're trying to make a little bit more inviting all the way around. Vidia had noted a couple of questions that I can try to answer for you. This, just one note, Tom mentioned this as well, this is not moving their headquarters. This is just taking the branch out of the original main office building and moving it into this new location so that it's really just a swap in locations for their, for their current branch location. We'll go ahead and the parking, or excuse me, the delivery area on the north end of the building, we'll restripe that, get that, that cleaned up so that it complies a little bit easier. That's a striping issue, we'll get that taken care of, that shouldn't be a problem to handle there. We don't anticipate this to be much of a delivery zone anyways for their use. So we're really just, you know, anticipating that you might have a, an office supply truck or something, you know, pulling back there, so it's really very, very light in terms of what that is. So we'll get that graphically to work. The number of size and units there, we'll get that figured out in the next month or so. Was our intent anyways. We've been working very hard at getting the glass atrium to be what Chief Financial would like to see it be. And that, that is almost entirely the load calculation for this building. So we'll, we'll be there. I think we've got it now, so I will, we're going to get to work on the engineering of what that load calculation is. The, the mechanical units are on the backside, excuse me, on that eastern side of the building, mostly to the north end of it. They're really pretty naturally screened from the street anyways, but they will have the screening from the rest of the perimeter of the building as well. The biggest person, the biggest place that they're visible from is Tom's office. So we'll have to make sure that at least he likes them, I guess. The, the coordination between municipalities has been... Nick, Nick has worked hard at trying to make this all work. We've been back and forth with Nick several times on this, on the coordination issue and he mentioned the coordination agreement that he so diligently worked on getting through. We are still coordinating with both municipalities. We've had a full conference with their planner and some of their staff as well after we submitted this particular one. We are intentional, it's Rochester Hills, intentionally, we are on the Planning Commission meeting for them after yours so that we could get your comments in, make sure that what, what we're getting from them is going to work together with that and then we've got hopefully yours right after that and then we'll have their final from there as well. So we are, we are coordinated at this point the best we think we can be and we're going back and forth between everybody. For the most part, Rochester Hills has deferred to Rochester for kind of authority there. They're just providing comments at least on site information and how they would like things to connect if it's connecting to their infrastructure. But for the most part, everything connects to Rochester's infrastructure, which is why Rochester's kind of taking lead for us on this, which we appreciate. It's our intention, there's a, to do a lot boundary modification on the south end of this property so that the parking lot is entirely within the, the branch office location because there's a, the, the 200 Diversion property has this little dog leg that goes all the way out to Rochester Road. We're just going to try to split that off and, and clean that property line up a little bit so that it's all more related to the branch office instead. But that's got to happen in Rochester Hills. So that's a Rochester Hills parcel, so we've got to go through their process to get that done, which we're, which we're proceeding with. And I think, Vidia let me know if I missed something, but I think that was the notes I took that to get your questions answered. Happy to answer anybody, any of the councils or commission rather's questions.
Will employees still be working from the old, more eastern building, the old location?
Yes, we intend to leave our current employees there. It's just the small number of branch employees that'll be moving over to the retail side.
And will they be going from building to building throughout the day?
Occasionally, it doesn't happen that often anymore. Everything's done, you know, email, electronic, but there will be the occasional, you know, walking back and forth.
Right, so one of the drawings shows a stair. It says PR, is that previous stair or what is?
Proposed.
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 That would be proposed, yes.
There will be a walkway connection from the new building to the existing building via the stairs and the sidewalk. And that was one of the questions we had posed and applicant said it's essentially for employees to be able to go from one building to another.
Do we need any sort of handicap access or ramp or anything between the two?
No, I don't, from a, from a Michigan accessibility standard, no. This built, the branch office has accessible entrances and is suitable for that. So, so no, based on what I can see, I would not anticipate that.
Okay, thank you.
Vidia, how about the height of the atrium?
It is well within the maximum permitted for the B1 district. I did check, even till the peak of the glass roof, it is still well within the maximum permitted height for the building.
This is Commissioner Clark Martin. I have a question. Where, I'm going back to what Commissioner Stone was referring to. Where are, where are the employees parking?
Employees would park on the branch site.
Okay, on the branch site. So that crossway, that, that crosswalk, the employee crosswalk going across, what time are they, at, what time are they at work and then what time does this drive-through start? Like, I mean, again, we're having pedestrian going across where cars are going to be coming through. So how do you anticipate?
Tom, I might have to defer to you on timing?
Yeah, that's fine. So I think the best way to kind of look at this is as if this branch is anywhere else. You know, for example, we have a branch in Pontiac, we have one in Birmingham. It's just the fact that it's close by is kind of a little bit of a change. It's unusual for one of the, for the employees to really have to work with each other. Really, like for, for example, employees at our current main office, most of the reason to go down there is to do their own banking. Other than that, there's, there's not a lot. So that's just the occasional, you know, that walkway is going to be very, I can't even imagine it being used really every day. If I'm getting it correctly. But the drive-through is there for extended hours a little bit. It's only, you know, an hour or two maybe after. And then on Saturdays are, you know, the main administrative building isn't going to be fully staffed, people come in, but, but Saturday is a half a day drive-through. So the employees that work in that retail branch will park right there.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a profile view of the proposed ramp? We can see the slope?
Yes, there's, there's a profile view in that package. I don't know, Vidia, if you can bring it up or if we need to bring it up?
Sure, I can bring it. If you tell me the sheet, I can go to that sheet.
It would be... Paul, which sheet number is it that that profile is on?
I think the profile, the, the site section we drew is the final sheet of our package. And that should show a site section through if you screen out a little bit and then pan down a little. We've drawn a number of different slopes and those all collaborate with the proposed drive slope. The red line you see on the top is the existing drive slope. And the green, the blue, and I think we had yellow as the third one is the existing parking lot next door for comparison and then also the slope of Diversion beyond. So as you can see, the proposed slope that we have nearly matches the existing slope of the parking lot at the next door and then Diversion.
You have any trouble with skateboarders?
Not recently. Maybe that's like a 90s thing or something, I don't know. Kids play video games now instead.
Maybe they all grew up, huh?
Yeah, I grew up.
Okay. I'd like to ask, Tom, what's your experience with the traffic on South Street and Diversion?
There, there's a kind of a steady flow through there throughout the day. It gets a little bit busier, you know, at the very end of the day when people are coming home from work. It's, it's not too bad. I think when everyone's leaving at, at the end of the day or going to that light, it gets backed up a little bit. But I've never experienced anything where I'm late for dinner or anything like that.
How about in the morning? Do you see the light backing up?
It seems like the morning is a lot more spaced out. I, I don't really see much of a backup during the morning hours.
If you've been watching, we've, we've had some proposals for some fairly significant. Properties on diversion street around the other side of the bridge and a little bit further north. And this. This particular spot has been front and center as a. You know, a point that people worry about over, overfilling it with traffic and creating big backups. But that's the reason for my curiosity. It doesn't affect your operation or it hasn't up to now?
No, it hasn't. And honestly, I think that could, I mean, I don't know, but. I'm not an expert, but I, I think if someone would do a little bit of study, it probably could be cleared up. Pretty easily by the timing of the light. Sometimes that light seems like it's just, why is it so long? You know, it's a lot longer than that, so.
We have heard that and it's apparently controlled by the state of Michigan. So. It's not like Nick can send his Litechs out there and spin the dials, et cetera. We're.
Gotcha. He did that last week once when we got in trouble.
You did, you did do that, yeah.
James, James sent me out there doing that a few years ago and it could happen.
Blame, blame it on James, right?
Exactly.
There we go. Any other questions for the petitioner? It's a beautiful site. Glad you're trying to make something of it.
Yeah, we're very excited about it.
What are you going to do with the pool?
Pool's already filled in.
Oh, no. It, it was always a striking.
Yeah.
Thing to come down the hill at night and look over there and see that pool.
Some of the employees tried to talk us into leaving it there for, you know, just employee use, but.
Good for productivity, huh?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're, we're hoping it's still a striking thing when you come down the hill and see that.
It's a different striking thing, yeah. Yeah, it should be. It should be. Any other questions for these folks? So between Vidya's comments and what you've heard here tonight. Some adjustments are necessary for the submission for the site plan. It looks to me like you might be ready to move forward here. So. Vidya, have you heard anything that would prevent us from scheduling this for a public hearing?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we are ready. We have done a good job of addressing all the concerns that are there in my previous review. I think they're ready to move on.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Well, Kristen has moved. The schedule is for a public hearing. The next available date. We have support.
Support.
Say support by Mr. Stone. And any other discussion? And the roll call, please.
Howser?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Vivekwa?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Very good. Thank you for the information and we look forward to seeing you. Whenever Siana gets you on the agenda, probably within March.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Everyone's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on this agenda is number six miscellaneous. And Nick and Siana, do you have anything for us there?
I don't, other than make sure when you're out and about. Take a look at the Pine Street development. They're pouring the cement driveway presently. They are still up to get the landscaping in this fall and tide. It's finally getting Addison to move the last two poles so they can finish the brickwork and. Continue to move on. So those two and then the gateway center also is the facade's been removed and you can see the, the nineteen. Yeah, I see you shaking. Yeah, you saw nineteen twenty six. I think it says nineteen twenty six Yates up there.
Oh, the Yates manufacturing, yeah.
Exactly. They're, they're working on that. That's exciting. And I've been working with them on their sign package and. And.
On Pine Street, how, do you know how they're doing? I, I don't recall how many units are in there.
Yeah, there were three. They've sold one and they've leased out the whole bottom office to condominiums.
Very good.
Hey, Nick, I heard something about a, a fire situation around there. Is that, was that, was that on that site?
No, no, it was not.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous from the Commissioners? Siana, I'll ask again. Number eight, we'll do public comment again. If you've got anything new, anyone waiting to talk to us?
I do not.
Okay, thank you very much. So number eight upcoming agenda items for December seventh, Siana.
Yes, so. We have the team from Becken and Raider who will be doing our master plan update. They will be available to talk to you, kind of give you an introduction to who they are. And what their kind of timeframe is on finishing the master plan. And just so you can get familiar or at least introduce, they can introduce themselves to you all. So you guys will, I guess, put a face with the company.
Good, very good.
Also, every year we actually have the date set out for next year's planning commission meeting schedule. So you guys will, I guess, give that your blessing. In addition to the annual planning commission report that we do each year to go over what we've done in 2020. And obviously any outstanding items still go to next year, but it'll at least give you guys a review of what we've accomplished this year.
Very good.
And Mr. Chairman, so I have two more. So two ten diversion. Mr. Parent responded back and he said he's getting very close to sending stuff to Vidya. With the comments from the commission at the last moment. And then Mr., just for the. Everybody's interest, I guess, especially Mayor and, and Mayor Pro Tem Vivekwa. Mr. Randazzo did submit his development agreement to Mr. Karat last, end of last week. So Mr. Karat, our attorney. Is reviewing that. Mr. Randazzo said, just we can schedule him for the city council. Think Mayor, we committed to thirty days to let the folks in the area know when that public hearing will take place. So pretty soon we'll be able to set that date for city councils hearing on the River project. So we will give the neighbors and everybody lots of notice to let them know when that would take place. But we're getting closer to him actually being prepared to come forward. And then, and then lastly, Mr. Riley, his Travis, his son at the one twenty. The, or the old collision shop. He, they've been rethinking and he called me today and said, all right, we're, we're gonna. Go to Plan C, which would be really scale it down and what could we do, you know, within the ordinance? So we had a chat about look up what you can do B1. Maybe it's a smaller little mixed use, just two stories. They've got the word that it needs to be in scale with what the PC had talked about. So.
Which one is this, Nick?
That's the old collision shop right by the cleaners as you come off the bridge.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
So they're, they got off the five four story. And we talked about not having such a major impact. You can still use that site for a little mixed use. Park it appropriately. Don't ask for a special project. Come in and meet the ordinance. So. We had a heart to heart today and hopefully that's what they're going to do soon.
Very good. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else have any? Who is that?
I'd just say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and stay safe.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, enjoy your turkey for two, everybody.
How do you cook a turkey for two? I, I still trying to figure this out.
Yeah, into lots of little pieces. Maybe it's time for a Cornish hen.
Yes, yeah.
All right. With that, everybody, happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe, stay healthy.
I'm happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.